I call a meeting to order and I'd like to call on Doug Olson to lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. I'd like to remind you, this is a public meeting. It is being videotaped and we also have an audio record as well as a written record of the proceedings. We have some correspondence, I believe. I don't think we have any awards or recognition, but Mr. Commissioner Alfred, who headed up the leadership day, has some communication.
Well, I have some communication from Pendleton High School and it's addressed to Melinda as well it should. She really was the one that made that day happen and put all the work in and contacted with all the schools and made it come off really, really well. And this says, "Dear Melinda, on behalf of myself and students, I wish to thank you and the commissioners for the opportunity to learn more about our local government. I know my students learned an awful lot and came away from the experience quite overwhelmed. That's a good thing." Signed by Brian Johnson, Pendleton High School's teacher. And we have evaluations. I'm not going to go into each one of those, but they evaluated the program. Every student that attended was asked to submit a evaluation form on what the aspects they found most helpful. Is there something you'd like to see as part of the program? The third was, are there any areas of improvement you might suggest? And fourth, would you like to have a program on county government presented at your school in the appropriate class? And then there were comments that they added on top of that, but the remarks were good. The suggestions are good. It's always good to hear back from the students on what their impression was. Unfortunately, this year, due to scheduling and due to the court load, we were not able to be in a courtroom and they almost universally said they would have liked to have been able to do that. So we surely want to make sure that we include that in our next one and certainly we will. We're looking at the dates already so that we get it scheduled in a time when it doesn't conflict with the courts. And that's pretty difficult sometimes to do, to try and make it fit in. But work's already begun, so it's good to have these comments. Good to hear from the students that they enjoyed it and got quite a bit out of the program.
I think we also got some cards, did we not, Melinda, from some of the other schools?
Yes.
Thank you notes. I think all of them really appreciated it and so... Certainly a program to continue. All right. We have minutes of the June 6 meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have additions to the agenda, counsel?
No.
All right. Is anybody in the audience who would like to address the commissioners on something other than topics that are scheduled on the agenda? I use the term "audience" loosely. All right. Then we'll get into our agenda. The first is asphalt roller purchase.
Good morning. Tom Fellows, Public Works Director. So the Public Works Department has requested proposals for an asphalt roller. We've received one proposal. It certainly exceeds all of our expectations. This is a 2014 ham for... I don't remember what the number was on it.
Is that in the parade?
Yeah.
That'd be a good parade.
Forty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and change. That's delivered to the Public Works Department. This is going to replace one of our older rollers. It was also on the list that the board approved for the road department to be seeking some of this equipment, so...
Are they all pretty uniform in size?
No, they come in all sorts of different sizes. This happens to be what we were really looking for, which is a 56-inch wide roller, under about, under 9,000 pounds. It's in that 9,000-pound range. This is the size of roller that works really well for our thin overlays that we mostly do on our roads. Larger rollers are for thicker mats. Smaller rollers are for parking lots and, you know, smaller projects.
This is basically the same size as the one that was replaced?
Actually, it's a little bit smaller than the one that's being replaced. The one, that roller was purchased before '94 and it really wasn't, wasn't a well-suited machine for what we do with it, but we made it work for a lot of years and then it's just finally time to, time to upgrade and get some equipment that works a little better for us, a little more efficient.
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Fellows, do you have anything else on the agenda?
I don't believe I do.
Okay. All right, item two, Eastern Oregon Counties Association.
Okay, this is before the board regarding the Eastern Oregon Counties Association. The county, after much deliberation and many months, decided to join it back in 2014. At that time, there was concern about the benefit to the county. The county did join and, under the terms of that agreement, the county can pull out of it on 90 days' notice to the other parties. In addition, the county has received its annual dues payment invoice and along with it came an invoice for additional costs that the county was not part of or approved. So the matter's really before the board for discussion, whether the county really wants to continue in this organization and whether it's beneficial or provides any benefit to the county.
You know, when we first joined, 2014, there was a real concern, did this really fit our needs? We almost didn't join and then we decided we would go ahead and do this. And I think that first year with some of the forest issues, grazing issues that may have, they didn't really help a lot on PILT and that was the main emphasis because we're already lobbying for PILT and we have more of a cooperating agreement and I think it just fits better to work with Morrow County on some of these issues and continue our own lobbying efforts and not spend that extra money.
The issues that the organization's been involved in are primarily things like forest grazing, sage grouse, things that really don't impact Umatilla County to any appreciable degree. And I don't see that we are getting our value out of the, out of the membership.
Yeah, I know when you say Eastern Oregon Counties, it sounds like we're withdrawing from Eastern Oregon, which we certainly are not, but it, I think it's an important point that, that we do look different with our, with our nature of our agriculture, with the nature of our big-time data center, our manufacturing, all the things that are relevant issues here are just simply different. And I agree with Commissioner Gibbons that with respect to PILT, certainly we have direct contact with Senator Wyden, who is actively...
Very much so.
...a national leader on behalf of PILT and has done remarkable things to get our PILT payment, which is significant. The Association of Oregon Counties do PILT. National Association of Counties do PILT. And there's one other initiative through AOC.
WIR.
WIR, but even within AOC, there's another, I know we contribute to...
Yeah, the Oregon Forest Trust Counties.
So, in terms of PILT, where are we aggressively pursuing that? I think I pointed out that we have some initiatives that we want to pursue, but certainly the jail is one of them. And do you want to say anything about water?
And we're working with the Eastern Oregon Northeast Water Coalition and we do have the lobbying efforts directly in Salem over water issues. They're not, the Eastern Oregon Counties is not that supportive because we're not always on the same page on philosophy on water and mitigation and the use of unused water rights that some of the Eastern Oregon Counties have. So I think it behooves us to step back out of it. Also, I would note, we carried a number of those counties for years, several years, because Grant, Harney, I think Malheur, or Baker, one of the two, didn't feel they could afford the payments and we were still the highest-paying county for dues in the group. And with that being said, I would move we withdraw from Eastern Oregon Counties.
Just not pay renewal, non-renewal.
I think we have to provide notice, don't we?
Yes, we do. It's on 90 days.
Very good.
90-day notice.
I would second that, then.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I have, as requested, I did notify Morrow County that as a result of our discussion last spring, we were taking that up today and I think they're taking it up sometime...
They are, today also.
Today, okay, but as you asked me to do, I notified them of what we were intending to do or thought we would do. Okay? All right. Item number three, this is a second reading of a fee ordinance amendment, so we will go into hearing mode.
This is the time scheduled for the second reading of ordinance number 2018-02. This is the comprehensive fee ordinance of the county and is annually amended to update any fees that are charged to the public. The first reading was conducted at the last board meeting on June 6. Since that period of time, there have been two fees that have been added. They're originally placeholders that were put in there, but now they actually have language and fees added to them. The first one is on page 2, 39.053. It is for information technology. They want to provide the service to people that want it for digital images from the recorded documents. This is part of an ongoing licensing that the parties have to pay for and it would be $225 a month or $2,400 a year, in addition to other fees that might apply. And then Human Services is also updating its sliding fee schedule. This is based upon the poverty level established by the federal government and so they just have updated those fee, their sliding scale to reflect the changes in the federal poverty level. Otherwise, the fees remain the same that were read on June 6.
Comments, questions, of counsel? Anyone in the audience, would you address us regarding this hearing? Not, we'll go out of hearing mode and into deliberation.
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval.
Second.
And it would be ordinance number 2018-02.
All right. Is, we have a second?
Yes.
So, any further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Pose. All right. We'll go back into another hearing and this one's over supplemental budgets.
Good morning, Commissioners Robert Paul, CFO. This morning, we have one supplemental budget to consider. It's a general fund, general county supplemental budget, requires a supplemental budget appropriate funding, not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in federal revenue of $65,000 and an increase in materials and services of $65,000. Any questions?
Nope.
Questions?
Nope.
Questions from the audience? Okay. We'll go out of hearing mode.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of budget order 2018-80.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item number five, this is also you, sir, budget transfers.
There are six appropriation transfers on the, on the agenda today. First, budget order 2018-76, general fund emergency management. This requires a transfer of appropriations to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. Requires an increase in materials and services of $10,000 and a decrease in contingency from general county of $10,000. Budget order 2018-77, Milton Free Water's facility improvement. This requires a transfer of appropriations to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. Requires an increase in materials and services of $4,000 and a decrease in contingency of $4,000. Budget order 2018-78, general fund public health, the communicable disease program. Requires a transfer of appropriations to not, to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $10,000 and a decrease in contingency from general county of $10,000. Budget order 2018-79, general fund code enforcement. The code enforcement program requires a transfer of appropriations to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $5,000 and a decrease in contingency from general county of $5,000. Budget order 2018-81, care program. The care program requires a transfer of appropriations to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in personnel services of $20,000 and a decrease in contingency of $20,000. And budget order 2018-82, economic development. The economic development program requires a transfer of appropriations to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires a decrease in personnel services of $10,000 and an increase in materials and services of $10,000. Any questions?
Questions, Robert? All right, I suppose we'll have to take these individually.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of budget order 2018-76, general fund emergency management.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Move approval of budget order 2018-77, Milton Free Water facility improvement.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Move approval of budget order 2018-78, general fund public health, communicable disease.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Move approval of budget order 2018-79, general fund code enforcement.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Move approval of budget order 2018-81, care program.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Move approval of budget order 2018-82, economic development.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number six, election results.
As is the usual practice, the election department has submitted the primary election results to the board for certification and the board is requested to accept and sign a letter of acceptance for the results of the two commissioner races as well as the one for the proposed new extension district.
And these are statutory requirements that they be submitted or is there a timing on it?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the election results and authorize the chair to sign the letter.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, item number seven, livestock district collection.
As the board may recall, the board previously authorized an election for the formation of a proposed new livestock district known, to be known as Salmon Point Livestock District. The election was conducted on April 17 and the results of that were that 23 people were in favor and 43 were against. So as a consequence, the district was not formed and the matter's before the board to recognize the results and then formally terminate and end the process for the formation of that district.
Mr. Chair, I move adoption of order BCC 2018-048, which takes care of recognizing and adopting the results.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, item number eight, Yerkes Benefit Plan Grants.
This is before the board for approval regarding the Yerkes Community Benefit Grants. The committee met and reviewed four applications for grants. After review, they approved two of those and those two grants are before the board for approval. The one is the Milton Free Water Golf Club for $3,000 and the other one's to the Milton Free Water Area Historical Society for the Fraser Farmstead Museum for $7,500.
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item number nine, STIF program.
Previously, during the joint meeting with the Board of Commissioners of Morrow County, both Commissions at that time were familiar with the new Special Transportation Improvement Fund and the need to form a committee to oversee that program. At that time, it was believed Morrow County, Umatilla County, as well as the CTUIR would be interested in doing a joint program and a joint committee. The staffs met and came up with a proposed intergovernmental agreement for the formation of that joint committee. After further review, Morrow County decided to be better for them to have just their own program and not be part of the, a joint program. And now it's before the board to determine if the county would like to continue to have a joint one or if the county alone would just want to have its own program similar to Morrow County and have its own, appoint its own committee, advisory committee for a Umatilla County STIF program.
I'd like to hear first from Commissioner Alfred, who's been most involved in those deliberations.
I would like to say that we have considered the options of joining with Morrow County and joining with the, with the Confederated Tribes. Morrow County's decided to go along on their own without joining with Umatilla County. It comes to a point where I think the Umatilla County would be best served to have its own, its own committee, its own advisory committee rather than having a joint advisory committee with the, with the Confederated Tribes and be able to consider the, probably many of the, many of the projects that would be adopted would be, would be staffed and manned by kayak, but we would have our own administrative person in Umatilla County that would, that would administer that program and we would be better served, I think, to proceed on our own.
I would agree.
Mr. Chair, I would...
I think that will streamline the operation.
Very much. Mr. Chair, I move that we proceed to form a Umatilla County STIF program.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have a question. Do, at some point in time, are we going to get, need to get a proposal from someone relative to, to how we intend to administer that program?
Been pretty well laid out by the state how it's done, but there are eligible projects. And that, what those are and how to integrate those is understudied right now by the, by the committee that has been studying what we've got so far. It's been under primarily the Economic Development Committee, has looked at that. It's really going to come down to a task of the advisory committee to set those priorities and bring them to, back to the governing body here, the Board of Commissioners, for approval. No money will be spent or can be spent unless it's approved by the board.
Is there a procedure in place for determining what the advisory committee looks like?
Somewhat. There are, there are suggested backgrounds of members and that's...
I would certainly suggest that our CE, CFO be on that.
Yes.
So are we going to, like, will we get, like, I guess, will we get a proposal on what the advisory committee's going to look like before it's appointed?
Yes, I can give that to you. I don't have it here with me.
Right.
I can give that to you, I'm sure.
So that we, so maybe, maybe we could get that on the 3rd of July.
And would like to have certainly nominations that could come out of this board.
But, I mean, I just...
Like to see what it looks like.
Yeah, I mean, we're...
I can give it to you this afternoon.
We're forming the board, right?
Yes, right.
So we would want to know what the board looks like.
Certainly.
Under the statute, at least, has to be five members and then you have to have hit three categories, at least. One is senior disabled, low income, and provider, I believe. Are the three?
I don't...
I can't remember what the third one is for sure. And then there are other categories. What the thought would be is to prepare an application for those people that would be interested in being appointed on it, make that available to some and then as well as have the board consider others that might want to be on the board, representing all of the different interests.
Bob Walder is, our planning director is heading, heading up that, that effort and preparing to advertise now.
And that pretty much mirrors...
I can get you that information today.
I guess I missed our special... Especially knowing, if we're advertising, I'd like to know what we're advertising for, what it's going to look like. Okay. All right. Item number 10, community service fee.
Okay. This is before the board for approval of a community service fee of part of the strategic investment program projects. A portion of the exempted taxes are paid up to, they have to be up to 500,000. And in this case, the districts have been meeting for some time trying to come up with an agreement on how the community service fee should be distributed for the VADA projects. And based on that, the committee, or excuse me, the districts agreed that the fees should be split equally between the two tax code areas. And then within the tax code areas, that portion would be distributed based on the entity's tax rate. In the one code area, there are six special districts and the county they're involved. The county has proposed, like it has in all other SIP programs, to not retain its share and in this case would be distributed among the other districts, other six special districts within that tax code area. And then within tax code area 601, the proposal is to do the same. However, there, the city of Umatilla is also involved. They would take their share based on their tax rate and then the county's share would be distributed among the other six special districts. The city of Umatilla would not receive any portion that would have gone to the county. And so this is going to be a recommendation to the Oregon Business Development Commission for approval. They do like to have the local government's input. In this case, they, we are beyond the time period that they would really seriously adopt what the local governments agreed to. They will definitely take into consideration. Their earlier proposal from the commission would have been just to divide everything just as what the districts agreed to. However, rather than split 50/50 between the two tax code area, the commission had proposed it would be split based on allocated value. So that if there's more development in one tax code area over another, then that area would receive more of the community service fee. And so at this point, just hopefully the recommendation that would come from the county would go to the commission and the commission will probably be acting on this in its July quarterly meeting.
So the city did not choose to participate?
They were not invited. They had previously indicated that they would not be willing. They wanted it done in a different, different one. And so the county met with the districts and came up with this formulation.
Okay. I just ask that because initially, the city was promoting the idea of us helping out the special districts, which is one of the reasons we were responsive.
They felt that their approach would be contrary to what the statute is requiring. They would just put everyone in the same pool and then divide up the 500,000 that way. And the statute says, no, it has to be done by tax code area. And since the city was unwilling to change that approach, then, so they were not included within the formal discussions.
Questions?
I guess it makes it sound as if city of Umatilla doesn't want to follow, follow statute. Is that a good way of summarizing that?
Yes.
Other comments, Larry?
Nope. There are no cities on the, on the first one. Umatilla only appears on the...
Right, they're not in the tax code, the 08, 03.
That's unfortunate. Mr. Chair, I move approval of BCC 2018-048... Mr. Chair, I move approval of BCC 2018-049, appropriating funds in tax area 08-03.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I further move that we adopt order BCC 2018-050, distributing the, the funds to tax code 0601.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. That concludes our agenda. Anything from Commissioner Gibbons?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Alfred?
No, nothing today.
Do we need to take official action moving our board meeting to July 3rd?
I think we previously did that.
We did that whole list.
We did?
Let's see, when was that?
One of those, one for Larry, I worked that one out. That's on the PILT proposal.
Oh, okay.
Here, I found one in April.
Can we just reaffirm our motion?
The one on April 17, you voted to move the July, first meeting in July to July 3rd.
Okay, all right, then we don't have to. All right, do you want to speak to this?
Well, yeah, I just handed you a, a paper that, as a result of the teleconference yesterday afternoon, there was quite a bit of explanation of the federal lawsuit regarding PILT and the, the fact that it was not distributed fully in 2015, 16, or 17. It was distributed on the basis of, of the appropriation made by, by Congress, where the statute has a requirement that it be distributed in a specified way. They didn't do that, so that was brought forth in a, in a lawsuit in Arizona County that brought claim and won the, the lawsuit. And the judge declared that it's a class action, so we will be looking at Umatilla County joining in that class action, becoming a, a part of it. The way the funds came down, we, over the three-year period, were distributed $3,107,070. The lawsuit is, sets forth in general terms that it, that would increase by 1.33%, and that amounts to $41,324.03 for the unpaid share, unpaid share from the federal to Umatilla County from Department of Interior. If we join in the suit and, and take the funds, there would be approximately a 33% fee, which amounts to $13,636.93, leaving a net to us of $27,687.10. We have until September to make the decision to join or not join. There is some speculation that perhaps the federal might just, because of the lawsuit, turn around and-
Pay it in.
And pay it anyway, in which case we'd save $13,000. So I thought you might be interested in the, the way it broke down and how it works.
So we might get, we could get the whole $41,324?
Potentially, if the federal government decides to pay the counties who are not part of the class action lawsuit. If we join the class action lawsuit, then we pay part of the legal fee for the attorney that has brought it.
So there's no compelling reason to rush into the lawsuit?
None.
Do we need to take official action that we're, or just?
I, I think just wait until, then I'll come back for formal action at some time, probably in August.
What's the deadline, September?
14th, I think, 14th or 15th.
Do you remember, Robert?
Early September.
Yes.
It wasn't for a while.
We have a couple of months.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else to go to the order?